I am calling to order the regular meeting of the Hubbard Stinn Planning Board. Planning Board meetings are broadcast live and digitally recorded. This meeting is being held both in person and virtually through Microsoft Teams pursuant to Section 20 of the Acts of 2021, allowing public meetings to be conducted remotely so that board and committee members as well as members of the public can participate remotely. It is 6:35 PM, recognizing that we do have a quorum with Mr. Steiger appearing online, so all votes will be by roll call. Attending in the room, we have myself, Mr. Carpenter, and our associate member, noting that absent from this evening is Mr. DiMalia and Mr. Holman. Moving forward into the agenda, do we have anybody here or online for a public comment? Is there anybody online?
No.
All right. Here are none. Moving forward, it's to acceptance of the previous meeting's minutes. Our usual process is to accept minutes. To accept minutes is to motion at a second followed by friendly amendment. Do we have to make any corrections? Do we have a motion to accept the minutes?
I'll make a motion.
I'll make that motion.
Right, here in the first, in the room, do we have a second?
We'll second it.
Excellent, here in a second. Any corrections?
No. Excellent, minutes again.
Right here and now, I'm calling a vote by roll call. Mr. Steiger?
Aye.
Mr. Carpenter?
Aye.
And the chair is aye, and the minutes are accepted. Moving forward on the agenda, we have the planners' report. We do not have Alec attending for the night. Leanne, do you have anything to go on the record with for the planners' report?
No.
Like, nothing at all?
He and I met, we talked about potentially postponing the downtown Commercial District grant to mid-next year, so it's still ready for town meeting, but we won't be ending this calendar year just because there's not enough time and MRPC doesn't have enough bandwidth to address it. So, yes, thank you. What else did we talk about?
I mean, that's fine, you don't have to get greedy with the planners' report.
Okay.[168.12][168.12](Laughter).
All right, moving on to new business, we have the best discussion. So, we had a request at the last meeting just to pull this in and to go on the record with it. So, the state has put forward some regulations, and for folks in the public who are interested in looking at this, these are regulations being put forward through the executive, EEA's executive, environmental, whatever, through the Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs. There we go. And as part of a recently passed bill, there were a bunch of regulations that were to come out to talk about how the bill was actually going to work. And in the process of doing that, these regulations were put out really, really short notice period. As we talked about the previous meeting, the only reason I found out about them was because they actually went out on a trail planners' group and not to any of the regional planning agencies or to any of the towns, which was certainly surprising. And it only gave about 11 days to make comment on it. So, MRPC put together these comments and submitted them. As a result of some of the comments that they received, they extended it for another couple weeks and just closed the comment period again, I believe on the 17th. So, there's a lot of inertia behind this at a state level and really not a lot of desire to thoughtfully include some of these comments. And a lot of that is because that there are very specific state goals for the amount of battery energy storage. Previously, it was, I want to say previously, it was a gigawatt by whatever date, and then it got bumped up by quarter or magnitude. So, the goals are ambitious. But MRPC put these comments together and did get them submitted in time, so they were certainly considered. I did have an opportunity to look at these before they went in, but I did want to bring them in and present them on the record and make them part of the record for the town. There's not really a lot of action to take out of this, like, this is going to be what it is, and there's very limited desire to have a conversation about it coming out of the EOEEA. There we go. So, with that, did any of the members have anything they wanted to go on the record with?
Well, I shared some concerns, most notably the draft regulations suggest that the town clerk should be the point of contact with the community impacted. I think that's the wrong point of contact. Planning Board or Chair or Building Commissioner or someone in the capacity of knowing what the issues are for that particular proposal or... There were other things that came to mind. One was some of the reviews were occurring after preliminary review and approval, which I thought were too little, too late. Amongst them were drainage, stormwater controls particularly, which is pretty important, I would think. Putting it at the tail end after accepting the preliminary plan puts you behind the eight ball in a way if there's a major issue. But I guess if it's a showstopper, it will be brought up at that time.
Yeah, and that's one of the ones that was certainly called out by MRPC on our behalf. And Karen did a good job in terms of how she framed it, which is, is the Massachusetts Town Clerks Association aware of their position as the default local government representative? This may cause issues in some of our communities with work with. That is certainly representative of how it impacts us.
Yep.
So, yeah, it's tough. Like, I have lots of thoughts about this, but it would be equally productive to just go scream them into the closet over there. But with that said, I think Francois's right, we certainly owe it to the public to put it on the record.
No, I mean, I share the concerns that were brought up by Alan. The only thing that I wanted to add to all of this here, and again, it's something I've been harping on in the past, MRPC is, as a regional planning commission, and it's something that we accentuated in the letter that we prepared and presented in support of the OCOM, the folks from OCOM. In principle, I think we all agree that we, as a town that lives in, that resides in an area that is propensity to having problems with issues such as storms and things of that nature, not necessarily always having the ability to be able to depend on the power that comes via the line. Having a battery energy backup is certainly something that has a lot of value. The problem is not that, the problem is the technology behind it. And I just wanted to accentuate again, and my thought here is that MRPC, as a regional planning group specifically that represents towns that are in the, in this Aquifer District, where we have a certain amount of concerns, or quite a bit of concerns when it comes to potential contamination of not only lands but also of the water that serves not only our communities but communities in the greater metropolitan area. And that is, let's look at technology that exists already and accentuate to the folks in the greater Boston area that other technologies exist that are non-toxic and non-controversial. And I have no idea why that is not even being accentuated. I have mentioned several times, and I have no, I have no personal affiliation with them, I just have personal knowledge of them, and that is, is the iron-air battery systems are there, they're actually being utilized, they are not only great in terms of being able to provide the power that is needed, but also many, many hours, and again, all they use is iron instead of lithium. And it would be, in my opinion, something that MRPC could accentuate, specifically as a product that originated here inside of Massachusetts, as something that we should promote, accentuate as a safe alternative. And I think it would allay a lot of fears that a number of the communities, members of our adjoining communities have brought up. And I think this is something that, again, don't get me wrong, I agree with all of the items that are in here and the procedural mechanisms by which we should be communicating and so forth, but again, I do believe it's very, very important for us to indicate there's technologies out there that are safe, they're better, and they are non-controversial. And let's make sure that we get the word out. Thank you.
So, I also wanted to note for the record that the state has put all 802 pages of comments received from communities on this up on the website for anyone that'd like to spend a long time reading through them or else use AI in order to skim them. And the specific regulation is, for the benefit of the record, numbered 225 CMR 29, Small Clean Energy Infrastructure Facilities Siting and Permitting, is the draft regulation specifically. But, yeah, pretty much everything has been, the dice have been rolled on it, we just don't know how it's going to end up. The final version is due out by March.
It's a big comment turnout for a limited comment period.
Yeah. Yeah, it definitely, definitely got some people. And also, some of the people who submitted comments on it from just scrolling through it, they took, they took a printout of the regulation and then just did what they thought effective redlining was and submitted that as their comment. So, that bumped the page numbers up quite a bit on some of them, because the regulation itself is 20 pages or so. So, yeah, no, it's certainly interesting. And I definitely have reservations about it specifically on the provisions about circuit writing, which essentially is just an extrajudicial process to make decisions on these without going to court on them in a way that heavily favors the applicant. But we'll see what happens, not a lot we can do. Any other comment on that or anything else? All right. So, next on the agenda is the continuation of the sandpit overlay working session. Just to recap, for the benefit of the public, we've been working with a consultant on this. The consultant issued, has been doing stakeholder engagement, they've talked to all of the stakeholders, the planning board is the last stakeholder they're talking to. We've had discussions about this for the last couple of meetings, the last meeting being a particularly substantive discussion. Really, for today, I don't believe we have much left on this in terms of having a discussion on it.
I completed my homework.
Excellent. All right, so, I know you had some thoughts on this, why don't we go with that first?
Okay. Leanne, did you see the maps I sent you?
Maps?
Well, it's like a Word document that I attached.
Yes, why don't you pull it up?
Just for the purpose of jogging my memory, I wanted to pull up the maps of the site that we're talking about in relation to the area that it's in, because some of this was, may have predated me. But some of it, I suspect, is driven by where there are either private interests or corporate interests that have pointed to the specific area and the boundaries there, too.
Great topic.
Is why we have what we have. Okay, if you could go to the second page, if you just go down a page.
Let me make sure Francois can see it.
Can you see that, Francois?
I don't think he can.
I'm sorry, I cannot.
You can't see, share screen?
Share it by the window instead of the screen, and he'll be able to see it.
Can you see it now?
I can now, thank you.
Yep.
Okay, so, this is where I think we were, the planning board came to the decision or recommendation that they proposed a neighborhood use district, I think was the term, was light commercial mixed use with some residential and a heavy amount of conservation and protected land, as indicated in the hashed areas. And a proposed, you know, access only through Gardner Road into the, into the site. So, this is backing up for some of you, but if we look at the area in the Hubbard Stinn map, which is on the first page, I was curious why we didn't include the whole area rather than cutouts of land, you know, that if we want to call that whole area mixed use from the west side of Gardner Road, you know, all of that up to the town line, it doesn't really hurt anyone, I don't think, because the underlying zoning isn't changing, the residential use is still the same, and anyone who's got a home in that area, if anything, would see potential increase in value to their property. And it would maybe be more logical to have it be continuous. That's, that was just my thought, okay.
That's also my biggest single issue that I've had with this study, is that I don't understand how the study area was selected.
Oh.
And I raised the question at the first public meeting, but nobody has seemed interested in addressing it so far. But if we have any notion of putting this forward as an overlay zone based on a study area, we had better be prepared to answer the question of how was this area defined? Because inquiring minds are going to want to know.
And then I looked, then I looked across to the east side of 68, and I see fairly limited development and larger parcels up to the railroad line, which you see. And I don't know what's, what...
I believe most of those are in conservation.
One of them is a solar field.
Okay, and one is conservation, okay.
Yeah, the ones, not the ones that you access off of 68, but all the ones that back up to them, all of those large parcels, I believe, are in conservation.
Okay, okay. That addresses my concern.
But, but... I'm not sure which chapter of 61, some flavor.
Yeah, I think it's 61, Forestry, the biggest one at the end of Underwood there.
Yeah, and then there's the Big Farm, and that has multiple parcels off the map there.
But at any rate, if this, I mean, if our goal is, or if a portion of our goals is commercial development along the 68 corridor, why the Dog Camp parcel but not Rieta Ranch? If our goal is redevelopment of gravel pits, why the Marinelli pits but not the Fletcher So, I mean, it's going to become an issue if we're going to put forward a geographic-based overlay zone.
I just thought it was convenient to see that everything north of Pitterville and west of 68 is whatever overlay we're proposing, mixed use, planned unit development, whatever you want to call it. Of course, the underlying zoning is unaffected. That's just a comment or a question that I wasn't sure of. That's all I wanted to say, you know.
No, that's a valid point to push back on one.
We can think about it. So, I did this, I did follow this questionnaire, and I want to share at least some thoughts. What excites us most about this project? Well, I think tax revenue potential and housing, which is affordable. It have to be to meet my way of thinking the ultimate goals of what we want to accomplish. And it would have to be some type of cluster zoning, cluster housing, protecting the bulk of the land as open space, right? That's what we heard from the 100-plus people who came to the original hearing back in, workshop back in September, I think, or early October.
I think it was August.
Yeah, was it?
August, okay.
Lot of concern about protecting the open space. The biggest concern I have is, do we have the flexibility or authority to modify the aquifer protection status of the land?
We do.
I've heard that said, but I have no idea how that, what the process is or the timeframe. Is that we, we have the...
Revision of an existing bylaw.
Yeah.
Okay, okay, so there would be at least tandem proposed bylaw change, zoning bylaw and a general bylaw change.
Yeah, it would have to be.
Can I ask a quick question? I mean, can you, can you please kindly speak into that owl? It's hard to hear.
Sorry. I'm not projecting myself.
From where I am right now, it is sometimes difficult to understand all of the, with clarity, some of the words that you're saying, so I would appreciate that, thank you.
I mumble a lot, sorry. The question was, do we have authority or the pathway to changing the aquifer protective status of the land and how that might play into any rezoning proposal or overlay? And the answer was, yes, we have the ability to do that at town meeting.
Well, and would it open us, would it open it us, this up to litigation, though?
Litigation?
Because we will be doing this here, we will be doing this here potentially to a portion of the land that currently is being considered for development. And I think the owners might look at this here as a, as an action that's taken just because of this. And I'm, and I'm just asking the question, I'm not, I'm not saying one way or the other that that would be the case, but I would be, it's certainly a factor to consider.
Okay, fair enough. But at the very least, if we want to put a bridge across the Hubbard Stinn Brook, as shown in our sort of layout of the site, we're going to need to deal with it, even if you don't build any homes.
Yeah, and I don't, I don't see that as a point that's likely to be litigated, because it's not a reduction of somebody's right. Like, when you see litigation related to zoning, it's usually because you took somebody's right, so they make a due process assertion, you wanted my ability to do something, that's why there's all the arguments about grandfathering. If you expand somebody's rights to do something, they don't have a lot of grounds to sue you for that.
Uh huh. Yeah.
I know, it's interesting.
So, finally, the other contentious issue was traffic going out on local roads, Pitterville. As it is now, we're thinking that's an access for emergency use only if it ever comes to If it were residential development on that side of the property, I don't know that we would want to restrict it to only one access to the whole land for, I don't know. In some respects, it might, might ease some of the traffic burden, getting access only through one point off of Gardner Road is going to minimally require some type of traffic controls, right?
Well, you would also have to examine how that matches with your current subdivision regulations about single points of access.
Yeah, that too, right.
But the map currently has three, there are three available points of access. There's two on 68 and one on Pitterville, right?
The question was more about the one on Pitterville.
But, yeah, the idea of making it a locked gate, particularly in the context of residential, doesn't make sense.
I just...
Like, that, that's something, and that's, I don't even think that's a thing that we have to plan out now, that's a thing for future discussions.
Okay. Anyway, I think we heard from the engineer, I forgot his name, who was here a couple of meetings ago, also that little parcel south of Pitterville, that's ideal for any future town well.
Yeah, municipal well.
Then it probably shouldn't be part of this whole process, right? Protect it, keep it off the map, okay.
Yeah, makes sense.
Anyway, those were the main points I wanted to make.
No, that's, that's excellent comments.
I would lean heavily towards a special permit as a process for any mixed use, as most, most towns. I've seen a few, Wayland, Sudbury, Maynard, I can think of old mills and, you know, digital plants and other things that have been converted into mixed use. And from what I see of the town's regulations, they've all been special permits. If that were going to be an issue for proposed development by some owner of the land, then maybe I'd be concerned, but for the town's protection and for full engagement of residents and other town officials, the special permit process seems... That was the other question I think got raised by either Alec or the niche people. I don't know. What do you think? Special permits are a double-edged sword, it's a lot of work.
The, the special permit process that we currently have is fairly onerous on the applicant with, and this is speaking as an individual, I, if we were to expand the applicability of the special permit process to any kind of mixed use in the area, I would not be in the support of it unless we also made adjustments to our process, because it is onerous. And the amount of money that's been, that has been required to advance some of these projects in town over the last few years because of our own or special permit requirements has been insane, like, we need to do something a little differently than what we're currently doing.
Okay. I mean, as you know, I'm on board with... I, I mean, as you know, I'm, I'm on board with that as an opinion. However, if you're talking about a, a planned, planned project of some sort that occupies a substantial portion of this land, that's of a magnitude where our special permit process is not out of whack.
Yeah.
It's for the smaller scale proposals that it's got real problems.
Yeah, that's fair. Like, we were talking about, like, kind of a checkerboard had the law out a bit. If that was a special permit requirement for mixed use, that, under our current process, doesn't make sense. But essentially, with the way it's set up, it's currently, and this is a question I had from the last meeting, and I don't think it got answered super well, and I think we need to go back to the consultant with it, to what point would this development just be done as a subdivision, as opposed to? Because there has to be a road created, and like, would the order be, well, somebody does a little bit of work, creates the road, the lots get subdivided, and then someone's coming back and talking about doing some of the mixed use development? Like, what, what is the order on that going to look like? And I don't know, I haven't, I haven't been through the creation of a subdivision before.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, well, a big part of the problem that you're having, having with these discussions, is that you're trying to optimize some kind of a planned unit development in a vacuum.
Yeah.
Planned, planned unit developments are almost always a negotiated process of a specific project with, with a planning board, and, you know, there's give and take. Unless there's something I haven't heard about yet. We're not reacting to a specific proposal here.
No, we're not.
So it makes it very difficult to define what's possible and what's desirable in the, in the absence of some kind of negotiating partner.
Yeah, to your point, Chris, maybe there's, there's a point of bifurcating the requirements, depending upon the intensity of the proposal. And that, that which includes commercial as well as residential crosses that line to the point of requiring special permit, whereas if it's just a, an open space development of some sort, with affordable housing incentive, I hope.
Yeah.
That, that may be just by right.
Well, and, and that's ultimately, that's ultimately a suggestion that I think I'm looking at NICH to come back to us with on how to do that. I don't have that level of insight into how these large projects are done to be able to propose what that should look like.
Mm-hmm.
I'm really kind of counting on the experts for that.
Sure, yep.
Yeah, no, it's a good comment about what gets, and it's just, at this point, it's just a suggestion, like, it's not even a bylaw proposal. So the idea that any lots in particular are being left out is totally flexible. Yeah, the neighborhood focus scenario. I don't know why the ones on the western margin were left out. I know, like, Rietta was left out, because that is essentially in a perpetual trust. That, is it UMass or Harvard? The trustees of.
It's UMass.
Yeah, the trustees of UMass on Rietta.
I forgot about that whole aspect of that property.
Yeah. So, there really isn't much that is ever going to change about that. But, the other ones, I certainly think we can call into question. And then, as far as why it didn't go south of, further south of the other property, is because there is a difference in the fundamental character of the properties. And north of Pitcherville Road, the properties have a surplus of material. South of Pitcherville Road, they went deeper than the aquifer, or rather, they went into the water table, and those properties are not inherently buildable. So there's a whole separate set of issues to address there.
Yeah.
And that was why that ultimately got limited. And then, the discussion, there was a discussion about going further east, but the train tracks were one of the impediments to that. Because you can't really plan over the tracks. I mean, you can, you just can't, as a practical matter, do anything. So yeah, that's roughly how that went.
Okay.
So, I mean, in my mind, I think we've gotten the feedback that they're ultimately looking for. I don't know if anybody feels any differently about that. Because I think we could talk about this pretty much forever, and, but ultimately, we're all on the same page, like, no matter how you dice it up, everybody seemed to be on the same page that more density is fine in the context of some kind of clustered open space residential development, but nobody wanted to see a checkerboarded off into minimum size lots.
Yeah.
Okay.
It defeats the purpose of.
Yeah.
Of efficiency and best use of land.
I agree with that. And Alec did provide some examples, these were from Alec, the example of Alec.
Alan.
Oh, these are from, oh, okay.
What's that?
Oh, you sent over the, the examples.
Oh, yeah, we, yeah, there are several towns that are grappling with the same issue, and you see some of them as skinny as a two-pager from Westminster, or as comprehensive, let me say, in the best way to put it.
Yeah.
Is 20 pages from Lancaster or one of the other towns.
I would say that the, the bylaws from Templeton, Hubbardston, and Westminster are all cautionary tales, as we move forward, of planning tools that never get used.
Uh-huh, yeah.
I can't speak to the other towns, but I suspect they've had a similar experience.
Yeah.
And I'm pretty, pretty confident in my assertion that in the 20 years the open space residential district spent on the books in Hubbardston, the number of projects using it has been zero.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. So, anybody else have any, any additional comment on that, before we say a comment back to NICH, it's concluded? Maybe you know you ought to. All right, so, anything for you, Francois?
Nope, I'm all set.
All right, so I think we beat that dead horse enough. All right, so, we'll, we'll say that our comments and issues concluded. If they have any additional specific questions, I'll just have them reach out to the board via email for individual opinions, not in a way that violates open meeting law.
Do you have a, do you have a goal in terms of time for something?
There is a timetable. Do you happen to have any? So we are in line for, this project that we did here essentially opened up a couple hundred thousand dollars in additional planning money.
Oh.
For this and for a couple other projects in town.
Cool.
Assuming we get a letter in for tomorrow. Something along that, we'll see, we'll make it happen. But we have, I don't believe it's under embargo anymore.
I don't think so.
Okay, yeah, we received a couple hundred thousand dollars in additional grant awards to.
Wow, should be.
To further pursue this area of town, and also look at some of the stuff related to the downtown area with an engineering firm, so.
Our timeline with NICH only goes through September, so.
Any day now.
Yeah, any, any day now, they're going to come back with a recommendation.
Well, if we weren't back.
And if we were still under embargo about the grants, I didn't say a thing.
Just want to know where, that, you know, we should be at the ready, so if there's a draft or something we got to review, we're not going to be the rate limiting step in this process.
Yeah, no.
To reevaluate the time.
Yeah, no, we're going to send this back to them, and then they'll bring a recommendation to us. And there's going to be quite a bit more work that comes off of this, so. Okay, well, that was also the update under administrative matters. We need to do some seed assignments, but we'll save that for our first meeting next month, because we also keep putting up the reboot of the EDC. There's obviously some moving pieces in local government right now that make kicking off some of those major projects not necessarily super feasible, but, yeah, we'll get there. With that said, does anybody have anything else?
Um, I don't want to interfere with Alec's time. We still have in the background a little bit on the ag accessory use.
Yeah, I actually spoke to Alec about that today, and I unilaterally made a decision as chair that Alec should focus his time this week on making sure that we get those hundreds of thousands of dollars of grants, and we can pick up conversation on the ag in December, so.
I concur completely. Nothing we want to lose, forget that money.
Never stand between a small town and its money.
Yeah. Yeah, and, I mean, and ultimately, all of these projects are intertwined, so Alec has been great at following our instructions off the priority list, and these grants are going to put us in an awesome position to execute on some of that stuff in what has been the world's slowest chess game to get some of this stuff done.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. Yep.
All right, anybody have anything else?
I did want to mention, and Leanne and I had a very brief conversation earlier today, and it's more for information for the planning board, that it raised a concern several times to our town administrator, that the effort that we, as the planning board, put in over the last couple of years regarding the cell towers, lamentably, only has brought to fruition, we have, I believe at this point in time, only Verizon, for example, has one of the cell tower users, and therefore, it's Verizon, from what I understand, has a pretty decent service from the cell tower that is right behind the, what used to be the first, the church, but is now the first meeting house. We, as a community, do depend significantly on cell tower communications for our ability when we move in town to have communications via our cell phones. And so, AT&amp;T and T-Mobile, which are other two network service providers, I believe at this point in time, do not have adequate range or service in many of the areas that Verizon currently has. I will say that Leanne has taken the initiative, and I appreciate this here, to get in touch with folks from AT&amp;T, with some information that I gave to her as points of contact, and that we're moving forward at this point in time and trying to get a response from them regarding as to when they plan on putting their equipment on those cell towers. And again, this is more from an informational perspective. I appreciate the fact that the planning board spent enormous amounts of effort, time, to get these towers located in those two places where we have them currently, but again, after over a year and a half, we still do not have adequate service from some of the other network providers. So, what we are trying to do at this point in time is, is to diligently work on finding out why these other service providers have yet to install their equipment there. And so it's more, again, as an informational piece for not only our planning board, but for the community at large. Thank you.
Hey, I know the, the towers got sold to some kind of asset securities after they could go, well, I know the Vertex one, I don't know that the other one did. But the Vertex one is no longer owned by Vertex.
I, I, I understand that, and so as a result of that, AT&amp;T and Vertex, who originally came up with a plan, I believe sold it off, and it's now Verizon who maybe solely or with another company joint own that tower. And that's why the, pardon me?
I said, that's interesting.
And so as a result of that, Verizon does have their equipment up there, and it's running. And I've heard from multiple individuals who have either Verizon or even Xfinity, which piggybacks on Verizon's network, they have decent service. But that means that other members of our community who happen to have other cell providers do not have that good service. And I brought case in point to need that, our town administrator, that we have members of our community that, obviously, myself included, and so that's why I'm bringing this up, that use AT&amp;T as a cell service provider. And when we are on the road, God forbid we were in an accident or we had an issue, or even individuals, as we all know, that when we do have power outages, a lot of individuals who have converted to utilizing phone service in their home that is based on, based on internet providers, that no longer then have service when, say, for example, we have a power outage and depend on cell service to have, say, for example, a net, a network capability to contact either police or emergency services, would not necessarily have that. And that's, and that's a big issue, that's a safety issue for our town, and that's why I'm harping on this here. And I think it's very important for us as a town to speak and emphasize to companies such as AT&amp;T and T-Mobile, who are probably some of the other largest providers of cell services in, in our community, to put their equipment up there, so that we all have ability to communicate in cases that we actually need it. Okay?
That's a good point.
Again, it's a safety issue, it's not a, it's not a whimsical, wow, it would be nice to have a better service, it's, it is important. And we are a very rural community that actually does require to have forms of communication when we are on the road and we don't necessarily have. We have a lot of dead spots in our town, and that's, that's a safety concern. I would love to see the town administrator, maybe even our fire chief and our police department, you know, chime in into this here, because I think it is important. Thanks for giving me the soapbox.
All right, thank you.
I have certainly loved the Verizon connectivity. All right, with that, would somebody like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Hearing our first, do we have a second?
I second that.
All right, hearing our first and second, non-debatable, vote by roll call, Mr. Carpenter.
Aye.
Mr. Schager.
Aye.
And the chair is aye, we are adjourned at 7:23 PM.